The next item we have is our Health Committee update. And so, as has become customary, Beth Tiggen and Robyn Gilbert are here to provide us an overview of all things Health Committee-related, not only thinking about this school year, but beginning to think about how we transition into summer programming in the next school year. So I will turn it over to Dr. Tiggen.
Good afternoon, Chairman Cooper, members of the Board, and Dr. Cashwell. The Health Committee has met three times since our last update on April 22 at the School Board meeting. And the highlights of these Health Committee meetings are shown here on this slide. We've been reviewing the most recent data and comparing last week's student and teacher attendance data to the baseline, providing an update on the status of contact tracing and current case levels, continuing the discussion around vaccines, examining current staffing levels within our school health services, setting the criteria to transition from one tier to another when determining volunteer opportunities within our schools, and discussing the impact of the most recent amendment to the Governor's Order Number 72, and finally looking ahead to the 2021-2022 school year. Let's begin with a look at our most current core indicators for determining community transmission, as well as the secondary criteria to assess the level of impact of that transmission on our schools. Since April 21, the total number of new cases per 100,000 persons within the last seven days has plummeted from 138.5 to 56.79, and the percentage of PCR tests that are positive during the last seven days dropped from 5.2% to 3.3%. Needless to say, it has been a great three weeks. The community transmission level is now at the substantial level. And in addition, though, to these two indicators, as I said earlier, the committee reviewed the data related to the secondary criteria. And the secondary indicators are transmission within school, student absenteeism, and staff capacity. The good news is the number of outbreaks remains unchanged. That was until this morning. This morning, we got word that we have one additional outbreak. But really, the transmission levels in the schools have remained at the low-impact level. The attendance numbers for students learning in-person last week were calculated and compared to the baseline that we set back in March, and it was also determined to be at a low-impact level. The changes are within a half a percent of the baseline that was set, as I said, the week of March 2015 through 19. And when we consider staff capacity, on average, there were two and a half teachers absent from each school each day last week. This is up slightly from three weeks ago, when the average was 2.3 teachers being absent from each school each day, but the demand for substitutes remains low. I would also like to note that the ability to acquire substitute teachers remains high and actually increased minimally early in the week, Monday through Wednesday, and decreased minimally at the end of the week, Thursday and Friday. Those are trends we're used to seeing around holiday weekends, knowing that that was leading into Mother's Day. And at this point, I will turn it over to Ms. Gilbert to talk about contact tracing.
Chairman Cooper, Dr. Cashwell, and Board members, we continue to work on contact tracing in our office, and this shows a decline. Get you the right slide there. Oops. There we go. It is showing a decline as the numbers reflect in our community on that downward slope, which is really good, and many of our cases right now are around our students, which we know up until yesterday could not be vaccinated. So this really does show us the importance and significance of getting those vaccinations. As contact tracing will continue into our summer and the school year of 21-22, it's important that our employees, as well as their student families, notify our contact tracers if they have been fully vaccinated. This will allow that contact tracer with permission to verify that vaccination, as well as the two-week period post-vaccination, and allow, as long as they are asymptomatic, an earlier return into our schools. As we transition into our summer programs, our contact tracing teams will also transition. Our nurses will return to in-school, where they can work with their children, and our partners at Richmond-Henrico Health Department will collaborate with the individual school directly, as well as school health, to follow our cases and exposures at the school level and will be the primary contact during the contact tracing. While we continue to watch our community and school case numbers for illness symptoms, we do remain at that 10-day recommended quarantine. We are looking forward to the day that we get to below 50 cases per 100,000, which we hope will be in the next couple of weeks. At this point, we will be able to drop that quarantine period to a 24-hour period. So that would mean that a child that has illness symptoms could come back 24 hours after those illness symptoms resolve. We will continue to work with both our staff and students who have chronic conditions or special needs to resolve these individual situations. Our vaccination efforts continue at the Richmond Raceway, and this will be through the 27th. We have two events next week, and then two events the following week. Our nurses do continue to support those efforts on Wellness Wednesdays. And as of yesterday, we did see not only the FDA, but also the CDC, with the support of VDH, acknowledge and approve Pfizer to be used for our children 12 years of age and up. So this means that we will begin to vaccinate those children at the Raceway, which is extremely good news. The two events at the Raceway have extended hours this week, and the two events the following week will have extended hours. So we will start vaccinating at 8:00 a.m. and run those events to 6:00 p.m. in hopes that we will have some hours in there for our working parents to get their kiddos, as well as themselves, into the Raceway to get their immunization. We have moved those events now. We are actually on the infield at our Raceway. So that is a really neat feature, to be able to say you've come and gotten your COVID vaccine on the infield at Richmond Raceway. You'll actually be able to do this in one of the bays where our cars park. You'll be able to see the Raceway. You will be able to see the grandstand. You will actually be able to be right there outside pit row, and on exit, you'll actually drive across the Raceway itself, which is kind of neat. So we're really hoping that that will encourage people to come out and see us, along with the fact, again, once you're fully vaccinated and you've been two weeks post that full vaccination, you do have the ability to not have to stay in quarantine, which means if you have an exposure and you're asymptomatic, whether you're a staff member or student, you will return right back to instruction immediately without delay. Our recruitment efforts for vacancies continue for our open license, as well as aid positions. We do still have those two open RN positions, which we are now actively interviewing for. We have some really good candidates, so I hope when we come back before you again, I'll have some positive news to report there. I do have three RNs, two who are retiring, and one who will be stepping down at the end of the school year. So we have started those active recruitments as well. There are 21 clinic aid positions open right now, and we continue to recruit for those positions. So if we have any parents out there who want to come and work for us, any community members, we encourage you to go online and apply. We would love to train you, and we will train you in our clinic, to work beside our school nurses. And we will have these aides supporting our school nurses through the summer Academy programs. For summer recruitment, we have five schools that need both a license and a clinic aide, and then five schools that have an aide but still need a license. So 10 schools that we're still recruiting active nurses for. And Dr. Tiggen will come back up to finish her report for today.
Thank you, Robyn. Well, as a reminder from last month's update, the volunteer program is being implemented in a three-tiered system. The recommendation is to use the community transmission level within Henrico to determine the current tier. Tier 1 applies to schools when the transmission level within the county is high, based on the VDH's school metrics. This means volunteers may work outside the building. Transitioning to Tier 2 occurs when the VDH's school metrics indicate the local transmission level is substantial. As this is the current transmission level, volunteers may now work inside our schools in non-student spaces, such as the front desk and being able to sit when they can sit or stand six feet from others. Volunteers will not be permitted to work in classrooms, the cafeteria, or gyms while in Tier 2. When we do transition to Tier 3, which will be when the transmission level falls to the moderate range, then volunteers may assist in classrooms, cafeterias, and gyms. They may work in proximity with students and staff, as long as they wear a mask, and practice social distancing. With the health metrics allowing us to move from Tier 1 to Tier 2, and hopefully soon to Tier 3, it is important for our volunteers to remember that they will be required to complete a health screening, including a temperature check, before being allowed into the school. They will also be required to wear a multi-layered cloth mask and practice social distancing at all times. And while the principal and volunteer coordinator at the school will know which tier level that the division is currently operating in, the principal does have the discretion to determine whether or not the school will implement that tier level. As the community transmission level improves, there will likely be other changes as well and possible amendments to that Executive Order 72. As recently as last Thursday, Governor Northam amended Executive Order 72 for the sixth time, and he made it effective immediately. This action aligned Virginia's mask requirements with the recommendations of the CDC for fully vaccinated individuals, and it adjusted the spectator limits to be the following: The total number of persons for indoor venues cannot exceed the lesser of 50% of the lowest-capacity occupancy load that's on the Certificate of Occupancy, or, if applicable, an up to 1,000 persons, so whichever is lower. And the total number of persons for outdoor venues is also at 50% of that occupancy level, or 5,000 persons. Spectators specifically for recreational sports must wear masks over their nose and mouth still at all times, and six feet of physical distancing must be maintained between spectators who are not family members. Masks are still required indoors. While fully vaccinated individuals do not have to wear masks outdoors when alone or in small gatherings, this does not impact our schools. Students are currently permitted to remove their mask outside if they are 10 feet from another student, and this will remain unchanged through the last day of school, as we follow the current HCPS COVID-19 health plan. And according to the governor, additional COVID-19 restrictions will be loosened on May 15, when he releases the Seventh Amendment of his Executive Order 72. Impertinent to schools is the maximum number of individuals permitted in social gatherings, as it will increase to 100 people for indoor settings and 250 from outdoor settings. That's up from 50 and 100, respectively. The governor also indicated there would be additional changes to current restrictions beginning June 15. He stated Virginia will lift all capacity and social distancing restrictions on June 15, if, that's the caveat, if COVID-19 case numbers continue to drop and vaccine rates continue to rise. So what does all this mean for next school year? Well, the Health Committee discussed preparations for the upcoming school year in length this past Monday. Before sharing the recommendations, I would like to say the committee acknowledges that there is no zero-risk scenario as we move into the 21-22 school year, but the recommendations discussed to date include the following. Social distancing. The commitment for the fall is to have a full return to in-person learning, every student, every day. Knowing there will be more students attending in-person, schools will provide the three-foot social distancing to the greatest extent possible. As far as masks, we will continue to follow the guidance provided by the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health with regard to universal mask-wearing. So we will continue to monitor that over the summer. As far as wellness time, the thought was that time should be devoted within the school day to focus on mental wellness and social-emotional learning. While there will be dedicated, intentional time during morning meetings at the elementary school and during counselor-led lessons, also at the elementary level, at the secondary level, the advisories should have that same dedicated time for the focus on wellness. It is important that teachers are able to embed social-emotional supports and mental wellness throughout the day. We also discuss field trips. When students return to in-person learning in the fall, grade-level and division-wide field trips will be reinstated. The transition team's role will be expanded to include review of school-requested field trips that do not fall into the category of grade-level or division-wide field trips, such as course trips to New York City or band trips to Disney World. And the transition team will ensure adherence to all current health and safety mitigation procedures for those trips. Other topics will be discussed at future meetings to ensure that there is up-to-date guidance for the 21-22 school year. And I can't say enough about community feedback. Feedback from our staff and our families is always appreciated and shared at the Health Committee meetings, and we want to encourage them to continue to share their thoughts about a safe return to full in-person learning in September. They may continue to provide feedback through the online and in-person public comment options for the School Board, as well as reaching out to Dr. Grant, Dr. Hughes, or myself. As I wrap up today's presentation, just know the Health Committee continues to monitor for and discuss updates to practices suggested by the CDC and the VDH. As more and more data becomes available, the recommended actions are likely to continue to shift. We anticipate a significant shift on June 15, when the governor releases the Seventh Amendment of the Executive Order 72. Ms. Gilbert and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tiggen and Ms. Gilbert. I'll start to my left, Mrs. Atkins.
No comment at this time. Well done.
Thank you, Ms. Aggron.
I'm good. Thank you.
Miss Shea.
Wow, well, I have some comments and questions.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, I just, I find myself a little bit almost emotional with this update that you're giving me, giving us. I feel like I can finally see the light at the end of the tunnel. And I know I emailed you the other week when we turned orange, and you know, we had a celebratory moment, but thinking about next year and all, you know, and as we watch these rates plummet, it really just is almost an emotional response, and all the hard work that you and your team have done this year. A couple of questions. You mentioned that as of this morning, there's one additional outbreak. Could you share, not necessarily what school it was, but can you share, like, was that in transportation, or the classroom, or athletics? Do we know?
I wasn't on the call, so I'm going to let Ms. Gilbert.
It was a school program.
Oh, okay, at a school program. Okay, thank you. So, and just to circle back, we talked, you talked some about contact tracing and how being vaccinated could impact that. And I know I've gotten quite a few emails, particularly from high school parents, and about athletics and that sort of thing. So I just want to be clear, I understand. So if a student is vaccinated, and it's already been that two weeks, so you know, they're fully inoculated, if you will, if they are contact traced to have had contact with someone, but they are asymptomatic, they do, are you saying they do not have to quarantine?
Right. The contact tracer will, they'll have to tell the contact tracer.
Dr. Tiggen, pull the mic up for me.
I'm sorry. They'll have to, they'll have to let the contact tracer know that they have been vaccinated. The contact tracer can verify that inside the VAM system, which is what the Virginia Department of Health uses. And once verified, if they're asymptomatic and fully vaccinated, which, as you said, you know, one or two shots, depending on which vaccine, post, and then two weeks after that, then they will be able to return to school or for employees to work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the vaccination events that run from 8:00 to 6:00, obviously, a large bulk of that is during the school day. If that's the only opportunity that some of the students have to get vaccines, would that be an excused absence from school?
Absolutely. We will work with families. We've extended the hours and hope to help that. It's also, one of the days each week is a Wednesday, so we're hoping that that helps with attendance. But we will certainly work with families, like, just like any doc, this is, to me, like a medical appointment where they're going for a vaccine.
Awesome. You mentioned that outdoors, students will still need to be masked at this time unless they're 10 feet away, so at recess, they would still need to be masked. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that was the recommendation of the Health Committee. Yes, ma'am.
And can you just, I know I've gotten quite a bit of response about that as well. Can you just articulate why that is?
Well, on the current guidance, it's saying that if you're with another individual or small group, and the reality is that kids congregate on the playground, you know, we, the teachers work really hard to keep that social distancing, but we know with kids, it can often be difficult, especially when it's at play. And so, and we also felt like when parents made a decision to come back into school, there were certain expectations that they had, and, you know, where we are and what the conditions under which no masks are allowed, this was not the time.
So as we get to, towards the end of the year, where it gets, could get significantly hotter, luckily, we've had a little bit of relief in the cold, if students needed a mask break, the teacher would need to orchestrate, making sure that students were separate.
Yes.
But that is a possibility.
It's been a possibility all year. Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. I just loved hearing about next year. It just brought me so much joy. So just again, the masks for next year are a really heavy topic for families on kind of both viewpoints on it. So just to articulate, masks, masking for next year, that has not been decided yet, and you said it would follow CDC and?
And VDH.
And VDH. Okay. What about Plexiglas for next year?
We haven't really delved into the Plexiglas either for next year. That's actually a conversation on Monday's agenda. You know, we know that there's mixed feelings about that, as far as some families would like to see that go away. We also know we have staff and children who aren't vaccinated, some can't be vaccinated, and that's still a sense of comfort to them. And so we want to, you know, be careful about what we're saying. You know, we know that there are some classrooms now that kids may not choose to use them. Some kids do, some kids don't in a classroom. It, you know, we've not mandated it in the classrooms, but we've provided it. And the fact that they're still being used shows there's comfort in that. When I say it's not just adults, I think it's also our students, who some of them want that comfort of being another layer of protection.
So part of that's actually new information to me, so I want to just make sure I'm clear on this. The Plexiglas has not been mandated in the classrooms, but has been provided?
Correct.
Okay. So if a parent is very concerned about their child having Plexiglas around their desk, that is a conversation perhaps to have with their administrator or teacher?
And I should say, it's been, it hasn't been mandated for our teachers, you know, the adults, it's twofold. There are adults and there are children. And so while it has been provided, you know, there are some classrooms where a decision has been made not to use them fully, or, you know, and so we have allowed that within classrooms.
Thank you. And then, just a last thing, I appreciate you bringing up community feedback. I, you know, I forge you a lot of emails that I get, and so I think it's important that the community knows, you know, we're not just saying we'll pass this along to the Health Committee. We truly are passing it along to you and the Health Committee, and then you bring it up. And so I appreciate you making that point, and that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Miss Shea, Mrs. Cancela.
Yeah, I only have one thing, really, that Mrs. Shea didn't already cover. And actually, it's a little bit, it's a continued conversation as to one of the questions she just asked. When I'm talking with constituents and hearing from folks outside of community feedback, community members are concerned that some voices perhaps will be louder than others, and what will we ultimately follow? Because I just want to, I want this on the record, that we will ultimately follow what the CDC and the VDH say.
That is our guiding force. Now, we have conversations about things, because there are times where maybe the Health Committee has feelings, different feelings about things, but as a whole, that's been our guiding source the whole, the whole time, is what is, what is the CDC recommending and what is the VDH? And sometimes they've not been aligned, and that's caused some angst. But, you know, that is, those are our guiding resources, and we have our members of our, of our Health District that are there, that are part of VDH and the Henrico Health District, you know, in our Health Committee meetings to be able to help provide guidance as well.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to, I just wanted that reiterated on the record, that ultimately, we do follow CDC and VDH, and then what, sometimes even the committee is a little bit more conservative. I know we were with the social distancing, I believe, right?
Well, and that's one instance, and you know, that's where we have to also, as a Health Committee, but even more importantly, as a leadership team, is looking at the impact of decisions on staff and on students. So, you know, that comes into play as well.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So real quick, Dr. Tiggen, so can you just speak briefly to the wellness piece? I know that you broached it in regards to the support to the students and staff that is reflective of the supports that they're receiving now during the Wellness Wednesday paradigm, if you will. How are we building that in going forward, for staff and for students, that it will reflect, you know, the Wellness Wednesdays now?
You know, for students, it's really through those, not only through the specific times where things can be, that are planned for, which is the morning meetings at the elementary and counselor lessons at the elementary level, but at secondary level, that would be the same as like the advisories. We know we do different things in the advisories, but having specific days and times where the focus really is on that wellness piece. Outside of that, we also know that, you know, it's not something that should be chunked just in one time. It needs to be, is really working with our teachers as to how do you use those strategies and so on, too, throughout the school day. As far as staff, we have looked into some additional supports for staff. We currently have our EAP, which is our Employee Assistance Plan, but we're also looking at other things to help support our staff.
Good. I mean, I think it's imperative.
So stay tuned.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because it's important to make sure that we are, we're still continuing, you know, the efforts that we have made this year, because the need is not going to go away just because, you know, we're doing, we're doing school differently. So thank you so much, and I look forward to hearing more about that. Thank you again, Ms. Gilbert, for that you're doing, you and your staff. Please send our thanks to them, and you as well, Dr. Tiggen.
Robyn Cooper.
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't mind, I do have one follow-up. You said something earlier about how often you meet. If you could reiterate that, because while we were talking, new guidance just popped up. So of course, I mean, I think it can't be stated enough that this is a very fluid situation. It changes daily. Guidance changes daily as we learn more. But if you could, since we have new guidance, just reiterate how often you meet and how you consider that new guidance as it comes to you?
Absolutely. Probably since the last week in December, we have met weekly. We had started off meeting, you know, every two weeks, and then as we were looking at the impacts of the Thanksgiving holiday and, you know, the winter break, because winter break was two weeks, that we didn't, we missed a week in there. Other than that, we've probably met every week since Thanksgiving.
And so I can't echo enough what Mrs. Shea said about next year. I am so excited to hear about plans for the fall, and I know our communities are as well. But I think it's important for us to note that all new information is considered. all new information is considered, and this is a flexible plan for the fall, and we change when we need to change.
Absolutely.
And so before the emails start saying, "Well, today we got new guidance," it's just, I think it's incumbent upon us to recognize that we take that new guidance into account every day and every meeting that you guys have, so that our plans change accordingly. So I...
Yes, ma'am. It's been a fluid year.
Absolutely. And I think if we've learned nothing else, flexibility is the order of the day. And, because I know we've already, we've gotten emails, like Mrs. Shay said, about plans for the fall for wearing masks and distancing, et cetera. And it's May, we can't predict what August is going to bring, but know that we will be evaluating it, and your committee will, all summer long. And what happens on day one of school may be different from what happens on day two, but we'll, we just need to know we're, we're looking at it all the time.
Absolutely.
But thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
And just recognizing, Ms. Gilbert, as this is, yesterday was the end of our celebration of Nurses Week, but we know that our nurses are celebrated every day. And, you know, if you want to know who my Nurse of the Year is, she's standing right here. So thank you, Robin, for all you did.
Thank you, Dr. Tiggen and Mrs. Gilbert. Also echo our deep appreciation to you and the entire team, as yesterday was National School Nurses Day, and hope you feel, continue to feel celebrated. You are appreciated so very much.